The Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a quick moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I'll start with our student board representative, Sam Cook.
Here.
Arabella Stanley.
Here.
Alex Stiltner. Mr. Helverson.
Here.
Mrs. Reisner.
Here.
Mrs. Waterson.
Here.
Mrs. Wallace.
Here.
Mrs. Alwert, I am here. Mr. Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Bass.
I am present.
We have a call.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Ridgeway, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No modifications to the agenda.
Okay. We will move on to the ceremonial oath of office, which are we going to do off front? And Erin, Shay, and Ashley, if you guys would join me off.
Gotcha. Yeah. The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Number of the Board of Education at Harper Creek Community Schools according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you. I wanted to do a speech, but I'd like to thank the.
My. Took to go buy phones.
All right, next up is the organizational meeting. I had sent out an email, I think on December 12th. I did hear back from Sarah. Sarah was interested in the treasurer's position. I didn't hear back on any other offices' positions, and with that being said, I believe everybody that's in their current chairs would like to remain there. And so if anybody has any other motions to make or objections, if anybody has any. If not, Madam Secretary, would you call or do you read the motion, please?
Sure. Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education agrees and agrees that the 2025 board officers as follows: President Bob Bass, Vice President Barry Smith, Treasurer Sarah Wallace, Secretary Erin Alwert.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Mrs. Waterson. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alwert, I vote yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. We are going to move on to board committees. And so I wanted to run through those. Right now, budget is Mrs. Wallace and Mr. Helverson. And Mr. Smith is, would like to move into Dr. Boarder's spot, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody having objections to that? All right. Building Committee, we will keep the same: myself, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Wallace. Extracurricular Committee is Mr. Helverson. Mr. Smith is going to go off. Mrs. Reisner, would you like to be on that? Okay, we would like to invite you on that, and Mrs. Wallace as well. Policy Committee exists with Mrs. Alwert and Mrs. Waterson. Ashley, would you like to take, be on the policy committee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That's great.
Safety, we will stay the same with myself and Mrs. Alwert. Board assignments, the CASMA. Mr. Smith has volunteered to be our delegate for that, okay? And Mrs. Waterson has agreed to be our alternate, okay? Distinguished Alumni/Citizen Selection Committee is a party of one with Mr. Smith. Harper Creek Education Foundation is myself and Mr. Helverson. Mr. Helverson, are you still all right with that? Okay, great. Thank you for that. M A S B. Mrs. Waterson has agreed to be our primary delegate, and Mr. Smith has agreed to be our alternate. You were alternate last year, were you not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Current ad hoc committees, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Alwert, Mrs. Wallace, and Mrs. Waterson. Anybody having objections to that? If not, Superintendent Compensation Committee, who is next in seniority?
Mrs. Alwert?
I think Erin.
Erin?
Erin?
Middle School.
Okay. And then I believe it would be Brad or Sarah. I'm gonna flip a coin.
Nope, you can choose.
I'd like Beetal Lake this year.
All right, Beetal Lake. Brad?
I'll stay with the high school.
Okay. That makes it easy, no crossing out there. And then Shay?
I'll take Sonoma.
Okay, okay, thank you. And Ashley?
I'll take Waddles.
Waddles?
I'll take Transportation and.
I think that's, I think that sounds like a good idea.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Transportation's really good. Those guys were covered.
One thing that we had talked about last year, a little bit about the board reps, is I am going to encourage our principals to reach out to each of you in terms of what events are coming up. And, you know, big events, things that you might want to attend, things that would be good. And then if you do want to visit a building, simply either call or email the building principal. I think is the way we said last year. So if you have an interest of doing that, just let them know. And they can, they help you go around. I know that Kevin's here, so.
Does anybody have any, any objections to the slate of committees? All right, sounds good. Thank you for that. We'll move on to annual authorizations.
All right, I'll run through them really quickly. There's, you know, there's several. They are all the same ones that we have to do legally as a board. So the first is to authorize the following banks for depositories: Southern Michigan National Bank and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund for the general fund, payroll, trust, and agency debt retirement and future needs. Authorize the signature of the various accounts of the school district for the following people: the general fund, the payroll, and the debt, future need, and trust and agency fund to the board treasurer, the board president, superintendent, or finance director. Designate the second Monday of the month at 6:00 in the boardroom or the administration building for the regular Board of Education meetings. So if anybody would like to switch the time of the meetings, this would be the time to do that as we deliberate. Authorize at no cost a notice of board meetings for individuals who submit a request. Appoint responsibilities of the treasurer to the finance director and appoint the secretary to the superintendent of the superintendent and the recording secretary. The duties of the treasurer goes to Ms. Obermeyer, and then the recording secretary will be Mrs. Scott. Designate the finance director as the electronic transfer officer to do wire transfers. Designate the technology director as the copyright enforcement officer. Authorize the superintendent or finance director as his designee to invest monies on behalf of the school district. And then finally, retain Trune Law Firm for the 2025 calendar year for matters concerning bond issues, elections, and other specialized services with a not-to-exceed retention fee of $2,500.
Questions, thoughts, concerns? All right, Madam Secretary, please, or please. Go with one on the fly.
I am. Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the annual designations as discussed by Superintendent Ridgeway.
Works for me, so moved.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Smith, supported by Mrs. Wallace. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Alwert, I vote yes. Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
Seven zero, all right, thank you. Move on to communications, and we will start with President's remarks. Welcome to everybody in the boardroom tonight, and everybody watching online. Good evening. Hope everybody had a break filled with lots of rest with the Christmas and New Year's holiday. We are in the second semester, and it's off to a fantastic start. Board members, please mark your calendar for the February 17th, 2025, 5:15 meeting at Battle Creek Central, the joint Board of Education meeting. It'll be the second and last one we do for the school year. We are, the four board presidents are targeting one per semester as we move forward. And we are working on a speaker as we speak, but I don't think we have it quite nailed in yet. But we will have a speaker for that meeting. So please mark that down in your calendars, and let me know if you are unable to attend for some reason. Like to welcome again Ashley Reisner to our new, our new board member who, well, kind of is taking over for Dr. Dale Borders after his six years of service to the board. Welcome. Thank you for running, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And also, congratulations to Erin and Shay for winning and making another term. So you guys are great, and we value you greatly, so. Board members, you may have got a card from M A S B for the Winter Institute. I think Carla put something in our packets in regards to this. So if you guys are looking to take classes, remember the board does have a budget for that. And Carla can help you get signed up if indeed you're interested. Also wanted to thank Chef John Rummanapp for the board appreciation gifts. Very nice, and what a wonderful dinner for us tonight. And also thank Mr. Ridgeway for the beautiful picture of the field and very, very cool, outside-the-box thinking. Credit to, I guess, Mr. Smith for the, for the recommendation on that. But way to carry it out, so with that being said. Yes. With that being said, I will toss it over to Mr. Ridgeway and administration for comments.
Okay, first and foremost, it is January Board Appreciation Month, and there's a few tokens of appreciation. But just remember, thank you so much for this. There's no, no pay for our board at this point. So this is just volunteers who want to do good for, for our school and community, so thank you very much. Some events that are coming up: Sonoma Winter Showcase is on Friday at 9:30. We have No School next Monday for Martin Luther King Junior Day. We have a professional development for staff that day. Beyond the Cereal Bowl is coming up on January 23rd, Thursday, at 8:00 a.m. at the High School Media Center. All board members are invited, really all community members are invited to it. And basically what it is, is a partnership breakfast where different groups around the Battle Creek area come together at Harper Creek. We listen to a few speakers who talk about their organization, and it really leads to collaboration within the community, and it's done well. I do know that we have the Blue Oval Plant folks are going to be there to talk, so that may be of interest to people. High School Winter Carnival Dance is on February 8th. Spring Count Day is the 12th of February. K-12 Media, the marketing company that we had brought in, they came and were on site last Thursday, and they are doing the videography, photography. If you have kids at school, they may have said there is people in the school doing that. I have not seen the results yet, but I look forward to seeing those and to see how that'll work for us. The C A S B award nominations are due. If we are interested, last year, Mr. Don Myers and Mr. Gary Lincoln were award winners. I always suggest we don't, because we took both awards last year, and it's kind of spread it out in the county. But if you did have somebody you would like to nominate as a board tonight, would be the night to do that. I am going to call a couple of different committee meetings. I don't necessarily want to go through and find the dates currently, but we will have a policy meeting to talk about naming of facilities. I would like to have a building committee meeting in February. We are engaging, Jim and I are engaging with construction management firms as requested by the building group. And then negotiations is coming up for teachers, and so I would like to call negotiations meeting in mid-February to talk about strategy for negotiations.
That'd be the whole board?
So that would be the person.
We would do a personnel committee, and then we would come back to the whole board just so everybody's aware before we start negotiations. But to meet with the committee first, just to see where we're at, what we expect. One of the largest things in the district is there's quite a bit of turnover in terms of retirements the next couple of years, and we have to make sure that we are, you know, putting ourselves in a position for that succession planning. And then finally, there was a question at the last board meeting regarding absences for athletics, excused absences. I did talk to Melissa Fiesel, our athletic director, as well as Mr. Greenman, who was the athletic director. And I confirmed, so doctors and dentist notes, funeral, college visits, court appearances or legal matters, and observance of a religious holiday are all excused absences for athletics, just like they're excused absences for school. Those are the ones that, those are the only ones for school. So if a parent took a, took their family on vacation, in the state's eyes, those aren't what they call excused absences. They may be explained, but not excused, as an example. But that, that was a matter that came up, and Mrs. Fiesel is making sure that all of our coaches are aware of that. I believe she already did, but she's in the process of that. I think that's all the communications I have. Oh, I think Erin might have that one.
Okay. So I didn't know if you were going to talk about the matching or?
I will talk about, we have an agenda item I'll talk about at that point.
Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, you're up.
All right, we have two donations to speak of. The first, thank you to Rebecca and David Wisler for a generous donation of $5,000 towards the Harper Creek Champion Project weight room renovation. We'll also have a donation later in the agenda that must be approved by the board due to its amount. But thank you to Duckworth Construction and Concrete, Josh and Rebecca Duckworth, for a generous matching donation to the Champion Project weight room. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. All right, move on to student board reps, and I believe you guys have a report for us.
So what I, what I. So my report is, well, conveniently we've talked about it earlier in the meeting, but as regards the schedule change, that's what you guys are making this into, how it's made at this time. But I was interested in that, and being a student boarder, I thought it would be important to give the students a bit of knowledge. So I sent out a survey, gave them a little bit of a debrief as far as what I know it is about, and just asked them a few questions. One, do they support it? And two, why not? And the mass majority was that they don't. Out of 216 responses, I got 200 full notes and 16 tall guesses. Starting with some of the concerns, the mass majority I saw thought it would, in a one semester kind of class schedule, they thought the curriculum would be too short. Like, if you were stretching out the class time over one year, what they accomplished in one semester would be too short to stretch out over a year. Some thought it would prevent their ability to level up on core classes, so they could pick things like AP classes or go into KCC classes or CCC classes. Some said it's just too exhausting, and they enjoy the fresh start at the beginning of the next semester. And some said that they do not want a year of all. As far as supports, some liked the idea of getting more information over the course of, instead of one semester or two semesters. Some thought it might be better for either tests or other, other things. Some people just like more information, and then a few people above the, gave some compromises. One person said that they think, well, I think it would be challenging to accomplish. If a kid struggles in, like, say, honors class, that they have to go for one year, and if they don't struggle, like, well, not sort of honors class, but any class, they go for only one semester, I think that'd be hard to accomplish. One kid said if you're trying to focus upon improving test scores by maybe four classes a year long, a year long, and make a, maybe like a third block, make it a test block, which if we're going off of suggestions, my suggestion would be that, rather than changing the one semester block to a year long, maybe making a block that either focuses upon our areas of need or what we need as a district to get the test scores up. And yeah, I'm sure the board, you guys have a lot of opinions on it. I'm sure you can make these, this better, and I'm open to any suggestions you guys have.
Did either of you want to weigh in at this time?
We have something separate that we did.
Okay.
So you know ours, we did reach out to the counselors about it, collaborating a bit, talking about, like, what the students, like, how comfortable, like, they feel about, like, how prepared they feel for, like, their future and how their counselors, how much their counselors are helping most of that. So, because I'm personally, like, I really have a particular concern about that than normal. So, as you can see, we're actually trying to think about five, six questions. Most of the students who, who, you know, do like being prepared, most don't feel like they're ready to get out of the room.
That's what we need.
Their most helpful resources have been online. I hear my friends, a lot of, you know, talking to their other fellow students, maybe their older sisters or older brothers or other stuff. And Joel Roman, that's our most pretty helpful source. And we also ask them how helpful their mindset is with their counselors. And we got another question, you know, have you met with your counselor? How many times have you met with your counselor? Most of these students did not, but when it comes to being here, who's pretty wide variety, from, they're not helpful at all. Mind you, this is a very small scale of students, because in comparison to our last survey, we got 35, 35, I think, students to respond, so that's not, that's not a very good.
So your, your sample size was 17? Is that right?
35.
35, okay. Can you see 35?
Not, not very, no, that's not, that's not very good. Okay.
Um, our, like, the concerns and comments given by students said, I feel like we should talk more about the options which can better prepare us for the, for our college and talk more about the options we can have. Another person said, I experienced a level of disinterest in my counselor. We're going to mostly orientate towards my future and my emotional and my, my experience. And the majority of the students who answered the survey have used some resources available to them. We'll share our results. Plus, our concerns with our counselors, since they didn't have anything to mention for the students, finding more opportunities to help them feel more prepared for their future plans.
So yeah, we're just gonna, we're gonna come back and talk to the counselors about, one, you know, their concerns, maybe what we can do to, yeah, make, help them get opportunities and probably maybe somehow help, like, I guess, these students about the counselors, because I think we're starting to get a little, I don't know. But, yeah.
So, so you had, this was 35 students?
Yeah. Very small, very small sample size compared to.
And, and freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors?
Most were, most were juniors and sophomores.
How do you guys feel, or I know that there was just a, like a, like one person who talked about sports, but both of you are in sports, and I'm just wondering how you feel about, like, athletics and the connection with the colleges that you're interested in or colleges that may be interested in you? Like, do we do anything to encourage our athletes to reach out to colleges or, like, that type of thing for athletic scholarships? I know one of you are signed, yes?
Um, I kind of did it on my own. I don't feel like they were, they were really there for the athletic type of thing.
Okay.
And I feel like what I struggle with, like, I wanted to take more KCC classes to get ahead, because now I can get my bachelor's in nursing in three years instead of four, so I have four year one credits going into college. So I feel like that KCC is like a better way. And I feel like they should help, like, start, like, getting colleges you're interested in, see if those classes transfer, rather than taking classes at, like, Harper that you don't really need. Like, I didn't need the help, but my counselor was encouraging me to take that, but why would I take that when I don't need that? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We do have the, these programs, we need to, like, I guess, bring it more into life with the students.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I mean, I personally, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know about that at all. I mean, I'm sure other students would like to, you know, have more opportunities, more options, more, more to live.
Yeah, to get ahead of.
Right.
Well, just a suggestion, maybe you guys could kind of be the middle man to say, like, okay, let's talk with the counselors, see what they have to offer the students, make sure we, like, kind of broadcast out to them, let them know, and kind of, like, rebuild that relationship that sounds like maybe it's broken down a little bit.
I think this is great. I'd probably take it the next step further and try and understand why. So what you just said was really compelling. I'm curious to know, did your counselor guide you in that direction to basically use dual enrollment to help get you further ahead?
Like, yes and no. I feel like I kind of worked at it some on my own, because, like I said with the pre-cut, this thing, she wanted me to take this, and I was like, well, I really took math at KCC, so it counts as something towards college, where I would need a
Yeah.
college math credit instead of pre-cut, because they don't require that for nursing.
Yeah, and I think, I think the interesting thing, too, is it matters sequentially. So if you're a student who says, gee, I really want to go to Michigan, University of Michigan, and the guidance counselor gives you guidance that says, okay, well, this is a requirement when you're a freshman, chances are you're going to be a lot more successful than if they give you that guidance when you're a junior.
I totally agree.
So.
Yeah.
That would be really interesting to get an understanding of, you know, do our students have those understandings in working with their counselor in which grade? Because if we're getting to a degree where we're, we feel like we're prepared when we're juniors, depending on what you want to do, it could be too late.
Right, I agree.
Great point.
So is that something that you guys might be able to incorporate?
Yeah. We're gonna have to touch base on that. But, yeah, I, next year, I'll do that.
So maybe, is your next step now then to, to meet with the counselors?
Yeah.
And share this with them and?
Yeah, after we gather the results.
Okay. Yeah, because I think we, in fairness to them, we, we want to make sure we get their perspective as well.
Mm-hmm.
Get their feedback, and hopefully, I mean, the whole purpose, you guys work with them, and we get some meaningful recommendations to improve going forward.
I think the other thing, too, we need to be cognizant of, it's a two-way relationship.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's not saying that it's all the issue with the counselor, but it could be the issue with the students not really taking initiative, and so how do we address that?
Yep.
So peeling the onion and finding what the driver is is going to be really important here, but I think this is worthwhile work.
Yep.
So I think it's very well done.
What I would say is, just with a smaller sample size, where two hundred and sixteen responses here versus thirty-five, it, you know.
You had a little hot topic, so.
Yeah.
We're very passionate.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get it, so. Any further comments? I assume we will talk a little bit more about that when we get to the high school scheduling update here shortly, so. Lead off with district updates, and Mrs. Williams.
Good evening. Um, a short bit that we were in school since our last meeting, we've had professional development, professional development, professional health. As you know from previous meetings, are working to support our teachers with implementation of our new ELA curriculum, as well as circling back for our math. That was approved in two thousand and eighteen, just taking a look at the many components and supporting them. So there's a couple pictures in there. In addition, our district curriculum council, we're taking a look at the components of a thinking, building thinking classrooms, because that is a cross-contents, and so we're doing some digging into what does that look like? Also, we're in the investigation stage of what's out there for artificial intelligence, which we're continuing to lancing, just to see what's out there. There's things all over with price tags. It's a bit daunting, but we are excited and optimistic about going slow to be intentional and move fast. So, there wasn't a ton that happened since we last met, but I did want to just share with you that teachers are working hard. The picture here with the teachers at Sonoma, that literally was the last week before break, and they were all engaged. Janice, who's there, she was at all of our elementaries, helping teachers to understand how to better use the data. So one example, at this particular meeting, she taught them how to use the unit screener and have students identify what learning targets they want to work on, and so they can take on that ownership and, and can be helpers in the process for students that don't have that learning target.
Questions or comments from Mrs. Williams? Thank you. To facilities and Mr. Robinson.
Oh, yeah, I submitted my report as well. One thing that, that has come about since the writing of the report, is I've met with our custodial team, and as everybody's aware, we've had constant issues keeping, you know, just people, people here on a regular basis. So one of the, this came from our custodial company, DM Burr. They are looking right now at no charge to the district, but looking at getting some autonomous cleaning machines. So it's a new thing, and you've seen them probably in, like, Sam's and some of these other places. So it will help alleviate the load on some of our manpower, for, like, some of our bigger areas, some of, like, our corridors and gyms and stuff like that. So it's a positive. We're excited. We're kind of going to be one of their test schools for that. So I'm excited for that opportunity, and I'm working with those guys hand in hand on that. So that's a, that's a plus. They've been out for a few years now, but the price has just been way too high to deal with anything, and now they're starting to come down, so we're looking forward to something like that. And it won't be to replace anybody. It'll just be fill a need that we don't have. We're not cutting anybody out or anything like that. So, but besides that, just our regular projects, Mr. Ridgeway talked about earlier on our building committee that we're looking at our construction management options, and so we're, we're looking into those right now as well.
Questions for Mr. Robinson?
What is a bollard system for the crosswalk?
A bollard system?
Yeah.
It's a system that, it's alongside the road, it is, the lights come on, it'll pop up like a.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it will not be able to be used, though, in the winter.
Okay.
It'll have to be taken out in the winter, so that's.
Trying to figure out how to get people to stop when the crosswalk, crosswalk lights are activated by kids.
Right now, it's just.
It's not happening.
Yeah.
So across Beetal Lake Road here to the.
Not necessarily a question, but just a comment. Been to the high school recently, and it's noticeable, the improvement that we've made to the exterior, exterior appeal of the high school, having flags in the front entry. The sign's always working, that sort of thing, so the team's done a fantastic job over the past couple of years, because I do remember when we didn't have those things, and I think it really helps, you know, not only draw appeal for the school, but also morale as well. You feel a little bit more proud.
Thank you.
So the team's done a great job with that.
Thank you. Sign's a tough one.
Both departments.
Sign is a tough one.
So filter first requirements, obviously you had to have your plan in by January twenty-sixth, which is complete. And we received some money. Do those projects start this summer, or do you know?
We've got some of them in, and we've replaced some of them already. So with the filter first, or the grant points, we are able to replace, we will get, we will get paid back for any bottle filling stations or filter stations that we bought since October of twenty-three. So I've got to pull the invoices, so we can get that. So that's a big help. But yes, this summer, we'll start ordering stuff. I'll probably start ordering stuff here within the next month or so. Yeah. We get things, so, and we're going to do most of it all in-house. There is some funding available to repay our, even our in-house staff, it looks like. So that's coming out. We're still not sure how that's going to work as part of the grant.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Now, how it'll be supported in the future, another animal, but this first bike.
Yeah. Filters are replaced, get replaced every year, every.
When it comes to the testing, I mean, you're talking about lead testing, hundreds of fixtures a year, every year, and that, that gets pretty steep. There's always good and bad.
Well, speaking of extra expense, we'll move on to Mrs. Obermeyer in finance.
You meant that nicest.
I did. I meant the extra expense of the, of the lead testing.
I submitted my reports, the, it still has the original budget, but by next month I will be bringing, so this page that you've used, been used to seeing for the last seven months, will change the original budget. So everything, like, looking at it, everything's what, what we've talked about for the last seven months, we're in line. The main thing I wanted to talk about is the cash balance report. At our budget committee meeting, one of the things I've talked about the last few months is, my LAF was open but was never util, utilized, and I started utilizing it in October of two thousand and twenty-four, so three months. You know, I told you about the greater interest rates, and it's a better investing, but I was asked to put numbers with it, so it was a little, there's other factors, right, how much money, but I compared it to last October through December, and for debt, we made eighteen thousand dollars more in the three months, which is huge, right, for three months. Now, this is the time where we have the most money in our debt accounts, too, so we're going to make more at this time. But eighteen thousand dollars more for a total of fifty-four thousand, five hundred for all of our debt accounts there. General fund was actually also almost exactly the same, eighteen thousand dollar more than the previous three months. And I, I tried to do the previous three months because the cash flow of schools is pretty similar throughout the year, and so that's what, that's what I use, that, dollar-wise. The checking accounts, the regular, like, general fund where we actually pay those is a point seven percent interest rate. The CDs are four point six five at this time. We've had that for about a little over a year, I think, and we have it for twenty-seven months. And the my LAF, it actually changes every seven days. Of course, right now it's going down slightly, but it's at four point five percent this week.
What was it at, I'm curious, last week?
Four point, I think, six or seven. I can't remember off the top.
Bond rates are rising outside.
What's that?
Bond rates are actually going up, so.
Oh, okay. So, so I guess I don't remember last week, but the last time I checked, which would have been in the last couple of weeks. But it's been, when we first started, it was a little over five. So three months ago, it was, I think, five point one five. And that's really all I had today. The big, my big talk will be next month with the budget changes. That's what I've been living. We are working on all the grants right now and trying to finish up grants, so then I can finish up the regular general fund budgets.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'll add in, we did talk at the budget meeting about PA one fifty-two, which is insurance. The, basically, the, we, we have a cap on insurance for the district for single couples and families, and that cap amount that the district pays is, is going to go up with PA one fifty-two. An interesting turn of events, however, is that this legislation that was passed in the House and Senate right at the end of the year has yet to be sent to the governor's office, and they only have fourteen days to make that happen, fourteen session days. And so if that doesn't happen, that doesn't become law. So we're curious as to what's going on. We think maybe there's some behind-the-scenes negotiations happening. For Harper Creek, now, I'm going to do estimates, and this is not Ginger's, you know, numbers, except for if we, if that came into effect, it would cost us around a hundred and ninety thousand additional for this school year into our budget, if that PA one fifty-two came into effect, because we would be paying more of the, the health insurance benefits, cost of our employees. We'd do more of the cost share, just so you have an idea, in case it does happen. We're hopeful the legislature, if they do that, then there would be a supplemental where they would make us whole, but there's no guarantee with the change in, you know, I, I think that the House is now Republican, it was Democrat. I think the Senate is still Democrat, so it's a split House and Senate currently in the, just to give you some information.
Thank you. Any questions further? All right, move on to technology and Mr. Maynard.
All right, the, the two big projects, as usual, the big classroom notification and clocks. Beetal Lake is underway. Most of the hardware over there is installed, not all of it. I think the crew is working this week to finish. About twenty of the clocks are already operational, so that's good. And once they're done, we'll, we'll look at how the dust settles and see what we can do next with any funds remaining in that project. The cameras, Sonoma and Waddles have their new cameras installed, the new server is installed and operational. Everything is running there. We're about ready to get the staff on it. Beetal Lake has the wiring in place, and the cameras are going in shortly. Actually, I won't say shortly, I think by the end of the month, end of the beginning of next, they tell me, based on timelines, so that will be happening, and then the elementary schools will all be done. And we are working on getting the rest of the stuff in place. So we have a server in place, we have one coming, and we have some, some refurbished ones we purchased that are going to hopefully take on the load of the rest of the district. So really hopeful that that project's going to get some clarity moving forward.
One of the, when we got, when we had the safety assessment of the district done, one of the things at elementary was to put cameras on the outside. And so if you're at Sonoma or Waddles, you'll notice in the corners that they're, they're fairly large, but I think there's three, or maybe even four cameras inside of that, and it's on virtually every corner of the school, so that we have more outside views, because threats for elementary schools come from the outside, not from the inside typically.
Very exciting. And it was a, it was with the help of a county sheriff department grant, then?
Yes, they paid all of it so far.
Okay, with help with all of it. We also have our cameras that we are going to install that the district purchased for the high school and middle school, so everybody knows.
Best type of funding, all of it. All right. If nothing further for Mr. Maynard, want to make sure we didn't have any comments related to agenda items. If you had a comment, please raise your hand, because we don't see any slips in the basket. All right, hearing is seen none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And except we have one closed session, needing notes to review. And Madam Secretary, when you're ready, you can read the motion.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school services fund check, school lunch, and student and school activity fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. And approve the following minutes as reviewed. December ninth, twenty twenty-four, regular board of education meeting minutes. December ninth, twenty twenty-four, closed session meeting minutes. January ninth, twenty twenty-five, budget committee meeting minutes.
Court. Been moved by Mr. Halverson, and I'm not sure who got, Mrs. Wallace seconded, and do we have discussion? Hearing is seen none, please call a roll.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner.
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Albert, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Bass.
I vote yes.
Motion carries, seven through.
Thank you for that, and move on to information discussion, school safety, Mr. Ridgway.
Okay, each meeting, we talk about the school safety meeting. It was very interesting today. We did the normal updates. You already heard from Jim and Jim on, on most of those. But we did a tabletop exercise, which means that we did a scenario, and in this case, it is a scenario that we had a threat, an athletic event, a large athletic event, and basically, we, Jim Robinson was running it, so he said, okay, here's the situation. How would we handle it? And so we asked everybody who would be involved, the athletic director, the building principal, the folks that manage the games, as well as our.
um, as well as our resource officers, and they talked through what they would do in the event. During this time, Chris Young, who is the county sheriff department emergency manager for Kellon County, um, listened. Um, and then he gave us feedback on what, you know, what he felt the best practice would be. And I think the people involved thought it was a really good, um, exercise. It makes us, it, it kinda sharpens the, sharpens the knife, so to speak, to make sure that we are prepared if that happens. Because if we never talk about it, and it happens, you go do the best you can in the event. Now, we actually thought about it, talked about it, and will more than likely make changes because of what we've talked about. Now, we don't want that to happen, but it very well could. The safety committee was actually formed because of a bomb threat that occurred ten years ago. And we've been meeting every month since, because it was a chaos. It wasn't, wasn't great. We were, didn't feel prepared, and so we've gone through a lot of iterations, and we feel prepared. The only other thing I'll report on is our emergency operation plan that we hired the consultant for, uh, with school safety money. Uh, we are in the final stages, so we will get the final draft of that. It's gonna go to the safety committee first for review, and then I expect it should become to the board for your initial review in February potentially, and maybe even finalize in March, is what I'm hoping for. So excited about getting that, um, up to, up to current standards, because we learn new stuff every, every time. Any questions on the school safety report? We plan on doing more of these tabletop exercises, Adam.
I think that's great. I think the tabletop exercises, coming from the nine-one-one profession, we work on scenarios very consistently. And I think it just brings a, a level of awareness. And just talking through it, I mean, bouncing ideas off of, of, off of other people. You just think of things that you don't necessarily think of in the moment. So I, I applaud, um, applaud you for making that happen.
Well, really, Chris Young pushed us to, to that point, so Chris does really good work. He, he is, is or was a parent in the district. I do wanna mention, um, a couple of things. So we are doing a lot more drills at the buildings that are off times. You know, you could easily, you do a fire drill, you do a tornado drill, you do a lockdown drill during class time. That's easy. So we're trying to do, and, and we're mandated by the state as well, to be creative in when these things happen, at recess for elementary or during passing time for high school, um, and making sure that happens. And then a side note, when, uh, K twelve media was here doing the filming, they're like, you have three resource officers? I don't think we've ever seen that in any school we've ever been in. They have three different ones. So I think that's something that, uh, also keeps our, our, us safe. Uh, one of the things in the safety committee many years ago was we need to put a presence in front of our schools, so people know it's a, it's a hard target. I guess is the right word, and that's really what the purpose of having so many people here is from the law enforcement. Not that I think it's unsafe here. I don't want anybody to think that.
So Rob, how many, how many tables, different tables? This was the first one?
This was our first one. So we, we would like to do it every couple of months, do a new scenario every couple of months. And just, Chris looked at me and said, what are, what are you most worried about? Well, if we had something happen, an athletic event, I'm not sure exactly what we would do. Let's say a large football game. How would we exit people? How, how would we get them in orderly fashion to where they need to get to? If we needed to evacuate that space, things like that.
I think there were some interesting conclusions that were reached today, and, um, you know, you guys probably heard me say this before, but my dad always said, your, uh, body won't go where your brain has it before. And so walking through these situations, um, and everything from verbiology, you know, what might be said to people on site, to what those actions look like, and to Jim's credit, um, did a wonderful job in setting the table, uh, to, um, get us to think through that, that situation. And I'm proud to say that we, we did our first one, um, and I look forward to doing more of them. I think will be very valuable going forward, um, in, you know, propping us for hopefully something that never happens.
That's funny. So Jim did one at the county level, and they did a tornado. A tornado that took out our school, basically.
It went down ninety-four corridor. It took out all of our buildings, pretty much, including everything up the road.
And if you think about, you know, the forest fires in California, I think that I saw eleven schools have been, you know, and what would you do? If, if your school wasn't here, how would you, how would you operate? Where would you go? And, you know, thinking through those is, is something that you should do, um, just in case it, it could happen. I mean, it happened here at one time when high, what were they called?
Straight line.
Straight line.
Straight line win, not a tornado, took out some things at the district, and we were closed for, you know, a couple of weeks. It did happen.
Have you, have you guys looked at, because I think another vulnerability that we have is end of day. Uh, I think in the morning, we're very organized and orderly, but especially at, like, the middle school and high school, it's chaos. So first of all, are we safe there? Second of all, if an event happened, because there's parents and students, um, you know, interacting during end of day, uh, that might be a good area to think through.
Yeah, that'd be a good scenario. That'd be a lot like the, like the bomb threat, the start of the safety committee in the first place of, you know, let's talk about the chaos and try to make it organized. Thanks.
Probably, probably, there's probably a thousand different scenarios that we could think about, um, in, in drastic detail, and so that's, that's a really good one.
And just maybe that's on the agenda for the night. Maybe just prioritize, what the, one of the, the top three or four scenarios we, we want to tabletop. I think that executional exercise and rigor is important.
I just, I, I feel from experience, you know, there's kids walking through the parking lot. Parents picking up kids, older brothers and sisters who might not be as experienced picking up kids, cars going every which way. Like, not only could there be an issue like a bomb threat, a weapon or something like that, but just kid getting hit by a car or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Um, understanding what happens, what would happen then. And I think high school is, I mean, that's the same, same deal in the front and back.
High school drivers, although the kid drivers, I think, are safer than the adults sometimes. Just kidding.
Yeah.
Good ideas. Thank you. All right, I'll move on to high school scheduling update.
All right, that was apropos, I had to tie in with, with, with the students, I have to say. Um, so I wanna keep the board updated. We talked about it a little bit at our previous meeting. I think I've sent some stuff out via email about, about this potential schedule change. Um, and I wanna give, I don't wanna go through Mr. Greenman's PowerPoint he did with the parents, but I do wanna give flavor for it. Um, and so I had asked him to send it along, and generally speaking, you know, the, people may say, well, why would you wanna change? I mean, the kids, especially based on their, their surveying results, you know, what things are happening that would cause this. And the things that, that come out, um, we do have teaching shortages. It's been hard for us to retain or have retained. It's still every position that we have within our district, um, and that is the same across the, across the, across Michigan, across the nation. We have a lot of projected retirements. Um, we have gaps in our, in our scheduling. And so the gaps that occur, so let's just say I'm a freshman taking, um, English one or algebra one, either one. It's possible I don't take another English or algebra class until my second semester. Now, we heard from students that they could double up also. They could take, uh, English one, then English two, then English three, English four, and then move above and beyond. And so kids that are really looking to excel, you know, that would be a, you know, pro in staying with the current schedule we have. But some kids don't, um, and when it comes to our test scores, which I, which I'll show you in a second, which I don't wanna put on the board, but, you know, we have to look at our reality of where our high school is. Um, our test scores are, are below state average, and I think some of that is because kids aren't taking a consistent, the cores especially, consistent up until their junior year. Some kids are, and some kids aren't. There would be an increase in instructional time in terms of if it's a year-long class at fifty-six minutes is more minutes than a, um, a semester class at eighty-one minutes in general. Just time is, there's more time. Building culture and community, I think, you know, some of our, our staff in our high school feel like we have kids that are out of the building a lot, and there's some value in getting, you know, ACC credit. You know, if I, if I'm a parent, and I can get college credit and not have to pay for it, you know, when they graduate, that's a huge benefit. And so we have to weigh those benefits with how do we continue having good culture and community within the high school. And we've had a decrease in enrollment. Um, the high school, and just so the board knows, so the high school's sitting at seven hundred and, let's say, ninety kids or so, and we have forty-five in alternative education. When you add them together, it's about where we've been. If you look at it separately, it is less, but alternative education was added two years ago. So I wanna preface that a little bit. I don't think enrollment is that much smaller, except for the fact that some are in alternative and some are at the high school. Here's some schools around the area, uh, like us, that, what, what they do. So Marshall has a six-hour traditional day with whatever two advisory classes are. Palmer Western has seven traditional, Hastings has six traditional. Plainwell is, has six trimester classes. Coldwater has six traditional. And then Lakeview has a six-hour day, but they use trimesters instead of semesters. All right, here's the slide I don't wanna show you, but I'm going to. Um, so here is our SAT test from fifteen, sixteen to now, or till last year. Um, we happen to be, uh, the school that is gold, the bottom school. Can you see that okay? And you can see some of the other schools that I had mentioned, so the green is Marshall. They seem to be at the, well, they are much higher here, but they're still higher than the other schools. Uh, Coldwater, Lakeview, um, Parma Western, and Hastings. Um, and so when we look at this, we need to do something at the high school, because we're not achieving where we should. Our kids are just as good as the kids that go to any of those schools, and for, for whatever reason, they're not prepared to take the SAT test as well as the other schools are, whatever that is. Could it be schedule? Could be. Could it be other things that we are doing or not doing? Yes, we, we need to take a hard look at that. And Mr. Green, if he was here, he, he, you know, wants to fully look at this in the face and not say, ah, it's something else, it's not important. Because unfortunately, um, these are, these are the results. And then if you look at the meat test, I'm sorry, the M-step. Shows my age a little bit. The M-step test, this happens to be social studies, eleventh grade, and it shows almost the same results, where, um, Harper Creek happens to be the orange one, which is at the bottom, and the other schools are achieving much higher on social studies. And so that is one of the reasons of looking at change. What should we do differently? And a schedule change is one of those. He had said during the meeting that the many high school staff have attended Stevenson High School, which is in Illinois, but it is arguably the best high school in America. And we sent, I can't remember exactly how many, twenty staff members or so over three different times-ish?
Ish.
Yeah.
It's higher than that.
I, okay, let's say twenty-five to thirty, but there's quite a few people that have gone. And they did notice that that school did have more of a traditional schedule where it was hours instead of blocks. Um, but they did lots of other things, things like the freshman, um, what is that called? Freshman connection, freshman? What do we have in the high school?
Freshman focus.
Freshman focus? The freshman focus was something we brought back from Stevenson. And adding things like that in will help as well. Freshman focus helps kids transition from eighth grade to high school. Grades, everything is different in the high school, and then you also have to learn how to take notes. You have to learn how to be a high school student. There's lots of things to learn, and Mr. Green kind of went over that with the parents, um, of how that would look. This would be a proposed bell schedule if we were to move forward with a more traditional day. And I know students would be really interested to see, because, you know, the, the hours are about fifty-six minutes apiece. Passing is five minutes. Um, there is a seminar class every day of twenty-nine minutes, and then lunch is around the fourth block. And the fourth block, it is still a fifty-six minute time where you have an A and a B lunch. Fifth, and then there will be the sixth, sixth block, which, they use the word block, but really they're traditional hours, fifty-six minutes long is fairly traditional. Um, some ideas for what seminar could look like, uh, that, that we don't necessarily currently have. The freshman focus is one of those things that we could do in that time, and he had indicated maybe sophomore, junior, and senior focus, because the junior year, um, you know, there are things that we're looking at. We talked about earlier with counseling, you know, what are the things, you know, getting serious about getting to college? And the senior focus might be looking at college applications. Freshman focus might be, what is your plan? What do you wanna be? Uh, what are the, what are those things that, that you could, could have happen? And several other things, standardized test prep. I do think that there's a, there is a, um, a place for that. I don't wanna teach to the test, but teaching kids how to take a standardized test, a multiple choice type test on a computer is much different than I took it, I, with my pencil and writing notes. I don't, I just, I don't know how you, I shouldn't say it that way. It would be hard for me to take the math test, SAT, without using a pencil of some kind and writing things down and figuring it out versus looking and trying to figure it out in my head for algebra two or even algebra concepts. So helping kids understand how they can do a better job of, of test prep. Here's the seat time, so currently, we have eighty minutes per day, four days a week. Our early release days, um, are a little bit less, so we have three hundred eighty-nine minutes a week. Um, eighteen weeks per semester are seven thousand per, of minutes a class per semester. Um, and then if you look at the full, full year at fifty-six minutes and do the same math, you'd have nine thousand six hundred eighty-four for a year-long course, courses. Of course, there's an argument, and I wanna make sure I talk about both sides. If I have a current semester class that is eighty-six minutes, that's a, that's an elective, and I make that into a traditional day semester class, it's a lot less time. So non-core classes, the time is less. Core classes, the time is more. And so they just talked a little bit about what, what things could happen in that time for those core classes. Now, there are certain classes, like band or choir, that would be year-long classes as well that are elective. And that makes it a little bit challenging for scheduling. Um, really, scheduling for band or choir is hard anytime, because it takes up an entire block on both kinds of schedules. And then he asked for some feedback from parents and, and then, and staff and everything else. But that is what Mr. Green had shared. Uh, the last couple of notes that I have is, uh, March first really is the deadline of yes or no, so everybody knows. Um, that's kinda where we're at. Um, scheduling occur, is going to occur in March, either way, if we're in a block or if we're on a traditional schedule. Um, but that is the information we have. Uh, we know we need to get more information out, especially to, uh, students and parents. You know, staff is fairly well-informed and is kinda going through the behind-the-scenes things to, if this were to happen. There's a lot to decide which classes are, are year-long, which classes are semesters, how do we count our credits? Um, we need to make sure that our credits match up with, with the state expects. Now, a lot of schools have done traditional schedules. It's not like it's a foreign thing or different. It, it's just different than we're currently doing with the block. Uh, the block does allow for, uh, nine classes a year, whereas this would allow for generally seven classes a year, unless you think about electives as being semester-long. And so that would knock it up a little bit to a similar amount.
So the, so the school comparison, it looks like there's a correlation with Coldwater. And I don't remember what they do. Is it different than what we do?
Coldwater has a six-hour traditional. You saying the scores are similar to Coldwater's right there?
Yeah. Yeah, and.
They're bluish, yeah, similar, right?
Well, it was, it was highly correlated in the M-step as well.
Coldwater was the blue.
Yeah, when we dip, they dip down, they dip down, and we'd both increase roughly at the same rate. So it'd be interesting to understand if they're already doing where we wanna go, there has to be something else that, around that correlation. So question being is, I think where this is going is, um, based on how it was presented, is moving to what you're suggesting. Should impact our standing here, or that's just?
Well, it should, because the, the test, the, the SAT is a, you know, basically, English, math test. The, uh, the M-step has a science component and a social studies component. So it's the cores are the ones that are being tested. We don't test in non-core subjects. Now, kids would probably look at us and say, well, those, the non-core ones are the ones we enjoy, the ones that we wanna do when we grow up, right? When we, we decided to do those things. So we don't want to, uh, take away electives, and.
Yeah.
I, I don't think this would take away all the electives or anything like that. And also, we wanna make sure KCC, we wanna make sure that math, science center and/or the tech center are all options. And how do we make that all fit? Other schools have, um, but we wanna make sure our kids, I wanna say this the right way. So let's say I'm a junior, and there's two juniors in the room. We wanna make sure they don't, that they have a pathway to graduation as well as what they wanna do in life next year, if we, if we were to make a change. So I think it's almost has to be individualized when we look at every student as a junior, of what they need next year. A to graduate, because that's, that's important, but many of our kids are, you know, graduation's gonna happen no matter what. Now, what, how can I get the things I want? Like, I wanna take two or three KCC classes my senior year, because that will get me prepared for where I wanna get to in college. So looking at those to make sure that that happens.
Rob, is administration looking for board approval on this?
Um, I haven't, I actually haven't thought about board approval on a, on a. Um, I haven't, I actually haven't thought about board approval on a on a schedule, but it's it looks like we have a discrepancy on where the students are at and where the adults are at. In this situation.
Uh, so may or may not necessarily.
They may change my mind.
Okay, um, you know, to me, I I I think it looks like the the data would support the move. Um, and I do understand the the students' perspective, but um. I definitely don't think it should in, we shouldn't allow it to encumber like the dual roles and we figure out a way to make that work. But as somebody that went a six hour block in high school, I do understand that it will drive probably better scores because we're our core. Curriculum is going to get taught better.
Well, I mean, it comes down to, and I know Laura would would probably say this clearly, it comes down to good instruction in class engagement. Those things, if those things are happening, then the scores will naturally go up. We have seen, I want to make sure the audience knows, I got, you know, folks listening, uh, as well as listening online. We have shown really good growth elementary and middle school, we just have not seen the same growth in high school.
Is there, and I'm saying this and I wasn't here last week when we, or last month when you spoke about this, but. If if the test scores are really truly what's driving this change, and I know you said some staffing has uh something to do with it as well, but like. Could we not try to integrate more more test readiness for our high schoolers before we do something so drastic? And because because when I look at it, right, I have a high school student and um and like my husband graduated from Harper Creek and. The fact that they're able to kind of take all of their core classes eh when they want to and kind of get that taken care of and out of the way early in the year. And then they're able to maybe take more KCC classes or do those types of things, they're they're not going to have that ability and so. Um, like I said, I wasn't here and I'm definitely want to read more about it to get a better understanding. Um, before I like voice any type of opinion on it, but I just think, could we be doing anything else to help these students get ready for testing? Before we do something so drastic that they're seemingly so opposed to.
Yeah. Only one thing I will say, and I'll just talk from my on my own, my own professional opinion, uh, as the board of the district. As a math teacher, I don't know how I would teach algebra one, algebra two in a semester. I I would put my my kids, the kids that I taught up against any kids that are taking a semester class, I think that we would outperform them every time. That's my opinion now.
Under a traditional schedule versus the block?
Yeah, because it was a year, a year long class versus a semester.
That's and that's the curriculum gap, right, if you take, you know, you could you could have a full calendar year between. Algebra one and algebra two, right, which means you're probably spending. The first several weeks of algebra, algebra two, getting yourself caught up on what you did a year ago in algebra one, so I. You know what my my concern is, I mean, yeah, this is a big move. And if we want to get it done for next year, we got we got to move on this thing and uh, so I I just worry that we keep. If we push it, if we continue to push it out, we continue to uh. I mean, I don't think test, testing isn't the reason to do it, it is one of the reasons to do it. And uh, again, I just want, I mean, it sounds like. Ed and and the teaching staff is pretty firmly committed to doing this and and bought into the value of it, is that a fair statement?
I would say so, I would say there's some elective teachers that are concerned about their program. Because of, you know, there isn't as much flexibility for kids to take as many classes.
When did we move to, what year did we move to the schedule?
Well, it's a little bit out there, but we we believe it was twenty five years ago.
Did we move to the block schedule?
So wouldn't there be more of a correlation to try to figure out what happened in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? Why we tanked? Then what we did twenty five years ago, that's not a problem?
I don't understand the question.
Well, if we changed this current schedule where we're having these issues now twenty five years ago, but now we're. Obviously, we're lower, but.
Yep.
I I don't.
I think we've been performing lower though for.
For twenty five years, so we're missing twenty, like if you put twenty five years up there, we've been historically low?
Well, the difference there is is before this, we didn't, not not everybody took the SAT, it was only the only the kids going to college.
Oh, okay.
Now, everybody is required to take the SAT. That's a that's a big difference, I mean, probably the rates back then would have been higher just because. Really, the the kids that were were performing well were taking the test.
I guess my thought is, you know, I don't think this is all about test scores. You know, we spend a lot of time at talking about what we want our graduates to look like and and spend a lot of concentration on that. We want to prepare them for the next steps and I think those next steps, preparing them, really lie in the core classes. And I I see the benefit of going back to this traditional schedule. To have that more time in the core classes. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, and like I said, we don't have to make a decision, the the discussion is good because now. We we're only going to have the best decision if we hear everybody's viewpoints. You know, people say, oh, I agree or disagree, we're going to see, we need all of those viewpoints. We can't have a bunch of yes people saying this is the way it's going to be. It's good to hear people saying, well, what about this, what about that, have you thought have you thought through it enough? Are we doing the right thing at this point? That's why we sort of have a the stopgap of, you know, yes, we're. Say plowing forward, but we have to if we want to make a change at any time, we got to get all this stuff ready to make the change, we have to.
So, and I know the electives are, you know, I I went to school on this and I was a band kid. So that really prohibited me from doing some of the different electives. Would it be possible to to move some of the electives to like more of like a club, like I think like yearbook club, I know that that's a that's a class. Or was a class when I was in high school. Is it, you know, something that could be more of a club so it could include? Like kids that are in band and they could do that after school or at at a club level, maybe during seminar. Class or something like that.
During the parent meeting, there were several things like that were brought up of flexibility in a lot of different directions. I know that Laura is looking at the flexibility in the merit curriculum, the state curriculum as well to see. You know, where where is it that kids could get credit if they went to the tech center, let's say. Not just in the tech classes, the elective classes, but also in core classes that that is is legal and not viable.
So you're saying getting, they get credit for?
You could, you, some classes, now, I I'm speaking out of turn because I'm talking about ten or fifteen years ago, but. There were classes where you could get your a math credit at the tech center, let's say.
So I, Rob referenced the parent meeting, I I attended it and. It wa- there wasn't a huge turnout, I, but. The parents there all, I'm going to summarize what I heard, I mean, the parents there. Were in favor of it, they voiced that they were in favor, but the key was going to be for their, for every parent's child. How does it, they're going to look at, how does this individually affect my child, my student? And then what's, how do we work through those nuances? So that'll be the key to this, right, if we move in this direction, how do we make sure that we have the resources are available? That every every parent who has a concern or a question. Has a contact point and gets quick answers for how how their individual situation is going to be managed.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that after the budget meeting of just the communication piece of no matter what happens is going to be a key. If you don't have the communication piece, then it's going to be, you know, people will either makes make things up or have their own reality of what does what does or doesn't work.
Yep.
So, this kind of regards flexibility, someone who's named an honors AP class, this kind of like was brought to my attention. So say someone is placed like in English one class in freshman year. Traditionally, they're a level off on core classes. By their junior year, they can take AP class, by their senior year, they can take AP class, but now. If the core classes, like your English one or year long. Say that kid finds he he has a passion for English, for science, for anything that has honors class like that, how would they find a way to get that?
Yeah, so the the what we have to do is we'd have to take a kind of a paradigm shift, you have to think differently. Um, where, let's say you took English one, English two, and then you could go and take AP at at that point. So you would just be going on that advanced track at that at that point. I don't want to speak out of turn again, but those are the kind of flexibility that we're talking about that we'd have to think differently on versus. You have to take all of four of these English classes before you're considered. Or if it's science or, you know, whichever one it happens to be. So that's, that would be uh an answer to that, we'd have to think differently. To make it work.
You know, Rob, it appears to me we have about, you know, forty five days to get this land this plane, so. This is, this needs to kind of come around, I think there's a lot to outthink here. Um, and so. Kind of not, I'm 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 sold on it for the most part, but I'm I'm not sure because I think there needs to be accommodations for some of those special situations and. For example, what he just said, so.
Yeah, I I know the high school staff is going to spend significant time on the twentieth coming up and they're spending. Time when they're when they're collaborating, like, you know, collaboration time that we have of trying trying to go through scenarios and what you're what we're talking about. Trying really hard, as well as we have to think about pupil accounting, we have to think about, um, you know, our. Power Schools has been in the in the news lately, but we have to make sure that our grade book works, right, for all of this. And we have to change the name of every class that we have, not the name, we have to change how it's coded in Power School. Because when we do a transcript, we have to be able to tell the difference between a semester algebra one credit versus a year long algebra one credit.
And so how are we going to do that for students that are halfway through their career in high school and they have block credits and then are we going to equivocate them somehow?
Yeah, we do that right now when we have transfer kids coming in, so a student transfers in their junior year and they were at a traditional school, then we have to go through that process now or vice versa. And we we definitely have systems in place for that, it's just, there's a whole lot more kids to consider than a transfer student versus two hundred juniors that we have coming into senior year.
You know, change is hard, change is difficult, change is awkward, sometimes change is necessary. And this might be one of those times. Alright, anything further?
I think an interesting perspective would be, I I think the test scores are a data point, but in the, at the end of the day, what we're accountable for is getting. Kids ready when they leave our school district, so I think that would be an angle to understand as well. Is our schedule, does it set up students to succeed in college or? Um, whatever their path is versus a traditional, might not even be able to get to the information, but I think that'd be a really good perspective as well because. You know, you could have an unintended consequence of shifting, whereas today we might not have the best, as good a test scores. Well, test score doesn't dictate how well I am at my job or my ability to navigate college and that's our end result that we're after. I commend you for putting the information up there. I mean, it's not easy to throw things up there, but that's how.
Well, I mean, the the harsh reality, we're not going to be able to address every possible scenario before we. Move forward or or not on, this is, there's a whole, there's a huge change management function here that we got to deal with, but. Again, I think we want to. I want to make sure the teachers support this, that they believe that this will improve performance downstream. But if we think we're going to answer every scenario before we can be comfortable going forward with this one, if that's possible.
Rob, we we are really the only ones listed here that are doing the blocks, is that correct?
Of the peer districts that that we looked at, there's definitely other schools in in, the other schools of Michigan that do a block schedule.
Yeah.
But it just happens our peer districts around us don't.
So I'm sorry, I'm I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around, I was looking at all of the information again. What is it that made us decide that the way to fix our test scores was changing blocks? I guess I'm still not under.
Well, nothing else has worked so far.
Okay, like this is like our last ditch effort.
It's it's it's, it is a big, a a big change that, as you can see just from the discussion, it's a it's a big deal. And that's, it's probably one of the hardest things to make an adjustment on, to see, you know, what that effect would be.
I mean, because like I'm looking at the, again, the. The SATs and every other district has traditional and every other district went significantly down from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four.
I guess.
So I'm just.
One of my concerns is, I, my guess is, and this is just my guess, we have kids who are performing academically. Not our top kids, not our bottom kids, but maybe in the mid, our bubble kids, I'll I'll call them. Our bubble kids aren't pa- aren't, when I say passing, our bubble kids aren't doing as well as the other schools' bubble kids. I think our top end kids, they they do great stuff all the time. And a lot of them go to the math and science center who had. Year long classes.
Well, I do sense another key driver here was. The benchmarking that a a whole bunch of staff did at Adley Stevenson. So again, sometimes that's what you do, right, if you're struggling in an area, it's like, okay, let's find who's performing well. And you go and you, and I I think that was, my sense was in in listening to the discussion, that was a key driver as well. Uh, looking at Adley Stevenson and the things that they do, so, fair statement?
That's fair. That was probably the biggest driver, I guess, that that those visits.
I think the other point I might point out is that the SAT scores, even though they all dropped from twenty three to twenty four. Um, is that we've been performing on the bottom end with the exception of sixteen, two thousand sixteen seventeen. Um, where we were second from the bottom, but um, we've been kind of riding that that bottom, so. Yeah, consistently, so it would tell me that maybe there's, you know, maybe this is the correlation, maybe it's not, I mean, we might.
Yeah, that's why I'm not for against, I'm just trying to understand the why.
I think it, I think it lends to the correlation because to Rob's point, the differences between the two is there's a lot more autonomy on the core. And so if you have a lot more autonomy on the core, you have more students that aren't hitting the core. As sufficiently as other students, probably to a higher degree, which is exactly what the measure is. Although it doesn't expressly say that logically, you would assume it would.
I think logically, we could also assume that students that are in this traditional style setting. Are going to be more apt to meet those end college goals and other things, I mean, the the numbers will will prove out to. I mean, it will definitely aid in that, so.
What's the timeframe that we'd look at to see whether or not we believe that it was successful?
Was successful, um, I don't know. Me personally, I'd say two years, some people would probably say three to four. I I think you would see, you 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 would more than likely see a fairly decent sized jump. Soon.
Mrs. Williams, any thought?
Well, there's several variables, I mean, we have a lot of new staff also. Right, so we need to get them up to speed on the curriculum, but I'd say two to four.
We do a lot of other great things at Harper Creek.
What's that?
We do a lot of other great things at Harper Creek, I mean.
It's it's hard to talk about the stuff we don't do.
Yeah.
I get stronger.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, let's move on to the MASB update.
Great.
Jay Waterston.
Um, okay, so in October, I attended the annual leadership conference um in Lansing, and this is my second year going, so. I went last year as a like brand new newbie to the school board basically and was kind of just, it was a lot. Um, and this year I went in with a plan and had some specific classes that I wanted to take. I also typed something so I don't babble and go on forever, so. Um, there was obviously a lot of talk around um the legislative legislative updates that were going on because it was. Um, we talked about it like during the morning and then we talked about it at lunch, then they have like a whole uh video series that talks about it. Um, and then um, there was a lot of focus on mental health at this leadership summit, which I was very much uh in favor of and. The mental health, not only for our students, but our educators as well, and how we can ensure that they're taking care of themselves so that they can take care of our students. Um, and so that, it felt like perfect because I have a passion for that, so. Um, we also talked about like the universal preschool for all four year olds and the retirement system updates. Um, I attended a few breakout sessions, so I was only able to, and Saturday they do the breakouts. And um, so a few of them that I attended were looking at the boards with real. And, um, so a few of them that I attended were looking at the boards with real eyes, understanding the impact of childhood trauma through NEAR. And there was a heavy theme, really it ended up, we touched on the new member orientation in all of the breakout sessions. Um, and so I know that we had talked about as a board, making sure that we had like a really robust, um, new member orientation set up for actually. Um, and I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but I think that, um, I did bring some of my notes and, and Rob and Carla, whomever, like I'm totally down to have a conversation about what other boards do for their new members. There's also a few outside, um, options. So like, um, C A S B does like a new trustee orientation, there's dinners like once a month that can be attended. Um, we just have to register. And so those are some things that, um, I would like to look into and I can share with everyone else as well. So that maybe we could just get some, some outside board perspective. And I know that we have our joint board meetings, but I might always think it's great to kind of hear what other people are doing and see how we can improve. My favorite part of the conference was there was a presentation by Dr. Adolf Brown, um, who has strong beliefs around whole student. So not just what's going on with them during the day while they're here, but what's going on at home and how that impacts their learning. And he discussed the importance of allowing students to express their emotions and how important the relationship between a student and educator can be and how that can play out in a student's life beyond the time in the classroom. Um, he talked about the importance of acceptance and loving yourself and asked the question, and this was specifically for educators, right? So, um, he asked the question, like, if I asked you to write a list of all the things that you loved, how long would it take for you to add yourself? And that really just has stuck with me since that conference. Because I think that we, um, I think that we have great educators in Harper Creek and, and I think that they are all here to really, you know, look at the student, not just as, no offense, but like, not just their test scores, right? But who they're growing to be as a person. And I, that is why I love Harper Creek. That's, that's a huge reason why I, I have so much passion for the school system. But I think that, you know, it made me think like, what are we doing for our educators to give back to them and to, to pour into them because they're consistently pouring out, right? And you can't pour from an empty cup. And so, um, Dr. Adolf Brown really, really focuses on just kind of giving back and giving our educators time to pause and say like, what can I do for myself today? Because all day long I'm doing for everyone else. So, um, and he also touched on unconscious bias, equity, diversity and inclusion, which I know was kind of like a hot topic. It was last year, maybe not so much this year, but, um, and the negative effects that, um, they can have not only on the students, but educators and school systems if unaddressed. And so, um, that's something else that I will follow up on because I think that maybe we could be doing a little more to address, you know, unconscious bias, um, equity, diversity and inclusion especially. Um, and so I just think he had a lot of very inspirational things to, that he brought up and discussed. This conference was very much network heavy, uh, which was great for me because I love to network with people. I love to meet new people. I love to hear perspectives from other people. And so, uh, I apologize if I'm not bringing back as much data as you'd like, but, um, I think that it was, it was just a great opportunity and I'm so thankful that the board allows us to do these things. Um, and then one more thing that Dr. Brown said that has stuck with me is, um, joy is an inside job. Happiness is dependent on outside factors. So don't forget that joy lives in you, right? And your happiness is not always going to be, um, reflective of how you're feeling on the inside because you, you can't control what happens on the outside. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Sean.
Welcome.
I'm still trying to figure out which one I, what number I might love myself is seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
Yeah, like ninety-five.
Probably wouldn't get the list.
Yeah, so.
Great report, thank you. Uh, strategic plan update, Mr. Ridgeway.
Okay, um, so last year, right about this time, we had completed a strategic planning process. And I had, I felt through conversations with board members that the board wasn't what I would call, you know, super happy with exactly how, how it turned out. I think that the, the meat and potatoes of it, uh, what, what it's about, yes, you know, these are the things that we want to do as a school district. But it really was more written in a, this is coming from board members' perspective for staff. We're like, this is what staff feel like, uh, things, educational, maybe it's a better way to say it. And so we took a look and said, okay, how can we simplify the strategic plan to, to have the same meaning, but with different verbiage? And so this was a result of, of that work of trying to say, okay, let's not throw it out and start over, but let's take what we have and try to say it differently. You know, the strategic priorities, you know, if you look down the, the fourth thing down, uh, drive student achievement, invest in our people, create a colla, create culture of collaboration, improve communications and create our future. They're written, uh, in a manner I think is more simple and easier to understand if I'm just a basic general community member that isn't involved heavily at board meetings or at school, you know, they may not, you know, a community member may not understand what a professional learning community is, but they can have an idea of what collaboration means. Driving student achievement, we talked about that, you know, ve- very largely today, uh, about student achievement, but what does that really mean? And if we go down to the objectives, so implement a comprehensive curriculum, deliver professional development for staff, create student achievement, a student achievement scorecard. Those are all things that we're, we were doing and we want to continue to get better at and, and come to conclusion, written in a different way. Okay, same work written in a, a different way. Now, there's one at the bottom that's, that's sort of a new thing, but you may agree that it, that it is something that's important to the district. Develop a comprehensive program for special needs students because we are seeing some differences of kids when they come to school and they're young. And what, what can we do to help those kids? Um, and, and really think strongly through that of what are, what are the resources that we have to help and what can we do as a district ourselves to, to help kids? Then the next one, invest in our people, recruit, develop and retain the best talent, develop future leaders, have a cohesive succession, succession plan. And then recognize and reward excellence. The same exact things, just written in a, in a more simplistic manner. And then all the way through, create a col, cultural collaboration. We did leave professional learning community here because we know how strong that is for our district. And we think that that is how we're going to make our biggest improvements is to have a professional learning community structure, create a volunteer, um, program, and then plant seeds for corporate partnerships. And then the next one, improve communications. This is large on a lot of people's lists. We need to do better at all of our communications. So deliver a communication plan that thinks about parent communications, uh, how we communicate this roadmap, um, all of those things. Enhance the Harper Creek brand and develop and deliver training on communication tools. We may have great tools, but if parents don't know how to use them, they're, they're not so great. You know, so are our parents able to use the tools that we have so that they can see what's going on? Yes, social media has become an important thing. Newsletters are still something that we do, but they may look a little differently. You may have noticed, most of our buildings or maybe all of our buildings are now using the same kind of newsletter. It's just, we, we, we've, we've tried to be a little bit more consistent about how we do things and how principals get information out in a consistent manner. So as I move through the system, it's not totally different from Waddles to the middle school to the high school, or from Beadle Lake to the middle school to the high school. And then finally, create our future, develop and execute short and long-term facility plans. And I think that's a big, uh, thing in our, on our list. You know, we need some facility, short-term issues to fix. How do we do that? And what, what do those plans look like? And also the long-term plan of when that high school, uh, debt is paid off in twenty thirty-five, you know, what is the next thing on the list and moving forward? Create, uh, created to creatively drive fiscal responsibility and then explore early childhood opportunities, um, that, that may be out there. Those are all things that were critically important in our strategic plan. So I guess we're looking for, this is a draft, it's not a complete, it's not, nothing like that, uh, what people think about how this looks in a simplified manner. How does it land? Is it something we want to move forward or we go back to the one we had?
I'll just, some editorial, I'm, the chronop, because Bo and I helped work with Rob on this. If you remember the, the process we went through at the, at the full day community meeting, the output we got, was incredibly wordy and not really, I, I, I don't think, I think Rob's being kind. I don't think any of us really thought that highly of the initial draft. We did, I think we made an attempt probably early last year to streamline that a, a little bit and it really wasn't hitting the mark either. So again, I think the intent here is a document and obviously not the final draft, but something that, uh, I guess is more concise, uh, more impactful for the community members who would see it, something you could put up in a, in a classroom and folks would say, yeah. Now, this becomes a meaningless document unless for every objective, there's an owner and a timeline and an action plan to get there. Which I know, Rob, you've done some work on that as well.
Yeah, we, we just.
Think of this, this is the, 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 the cover page, trying to incorporate everything that we've done over the last year and a half. And then, but the, the, the devil's in the details, right? With who owns it, who owns the, uh, um, the objective? What's the timeline for completion? I think obviously another part of that will be in our board update. There should be, we should have a strategic plan update. This, you know, once we approve this, there should be every, every board meeting, an update where we stand against each of the strategic priorities. So.
Yeah, I, the details, we, we did work with our administrative team when we did, after we, we were in the process and finishing, we did vet some details. I think it's a little more detailed, like who owns it. I think it's important. It's some things I've learned when I went to some training last summer, that it's really important that people, you know, are the ones that are going to be okay. That's my thing and it's better for employees or administrators to know what their focus is also. So to, to give a little bit of flavor, I don't want to go away from this if there's more comment, but the detail flavor and, um, I know this isn't, is this the right thing? Oh, right there it is. Hard to read. How much should I make a big? Bear with me for a second. I know watching it on the screen in the back, you're probably thinking, Rob, you're going too fast. Slow down. Okay, so we can kind of read it there. So develop a comprehensive training program. Oh, sorry, that's not the right thing. Right? Sales, that's not this. This must be the sample. Hold on. Give me a second. Okay. Sorry about that. That was a sample that I was given to, to work from, so this is. Implement a comprehensive curriculum. So Harper Creek will have a written viable curriculum that is available to all stakeholders, staff, students, parents and community to identify precisely what is being taught at Harper Creek. That is something that we've been working on for, for, for a few years now. What will success look like? The completion of the plan and it's published. You know, who is ultimately responsible? In this case, it would be our, our, um, assistant superintendent of curriculum. Resources require, require time, money, uh, because a lot of this work happens with teachers. And how do we do that? And can, do they need to do it outside of school, like in the summer? Uh, a lot of that work is, is being done. I put August twenty-five, I would like to talk to my administrators about what they think is a realistic timeline, if that, if that's still realistic or not. And then the action step, action steps, emphasis by the administrator on the importance of the, of the deadline. Using P D early release in summertime to complete the objective, reports to the board, progress are all action steps that we could do to see where we're at. That gives you a flavor and there, those would be for every single one of our priorities, there are several deliverables that, that we would have. Okay, now I sent the whole thing to the board. It's a giant spreadsheet that you can go through and see all the different things that are up there to see exactly what these things would look like. Now, a, any conversation or talk about how, about this process? Our thoughts?
I don't know, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Yep. Did anybody get a chance to review it?
No, and I'd like to look at the draft, just to kind of like.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah.
I mean.
My, it's my fault for not doing it before the meeting, but.
Again, I think the intent was, okay, I mean, we've been at this for a long time and I got nothing to show for it. So I thought, the intent was really right here to give, get a small group together, try to pare this thing down again, and then we can have the discussion as a.
Yeah.
Board, how does it feel? What do we like? What do we not like? And then build from there. Come, get across the finish line with a strategic plan that makes sense. And then, and then, then Rob and his team.
Implement.
Go execute.
It's, to me, it's a living document that is a steering wheel for the district to, to move to that next step versus just putting a, a document together and this says what we're doing. This will bring the measurables and deliverables home and so we can actually try to execute on, um, each priority.
I like the, I like, I agree with the priorities. I think those are great.
I would, if you look at the others, the, the strategic plan, I mean, that we did it up, I think that would mirror exactly what we, each of the parties were, I mean, just written differently.
Yeah.
And I could be wrong, but I think that they do.
Do you want to add anything further? So.
So next step, I would, if board members review it, we put it on the agenda for February to have further discussion.
Sounds good to me. All right, let's move on to summer tax levy resolution.
All right, this is a simple one. So at Harper Creek, we have a summer tax levy, uh, a little bit of background, the reason we do it. Schools do not receive a state aid payment in September, so many schools have to borrow that amount. Um, for Harper Creek, our state aid payment on a monthly basis is about two million? A little over two million. So we, most schools borrow about their state aid payment every year. We don't have to. And one of the reasons is we do a summer tax levy, so we have cash flow on hand. Uh, a, a second revenue resource is our casino money. And that, those two things together make it so we don't have to borrow money on an annual basis. It probably saves us somewhere between forty to eighty thousand dollars a year in attorney fees as well as interest costs. So I would suggest strongly that we continue the summer tax levy, uh, and pass the resolution to, to do so. Harper Creek has been doing that for many years, almost as long as the block schedule.
Appreciate that humor, Rob.
I tried. Doesn't come off that well.
That's great, great ask.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the, uh, large donation.
Yeah, so I'll just talk about it. So we, Duckworth Concrete, or Duck, Duckworth Construction and Concrete did a, a large donation. Would they would like to see it as a sort of a matching donation? And what they mean, mean by that is that they will, uh, they have committed to donate to the district fifty thousand dollars, which is significant. And so when other people want to donate, so let's say somebody wanted to donate a thousand dollars, it'll feel like two thousand because of the matching portion. And that's how they had approached Mel on it. Uh, I will be, you know, transparent that they already wrote the check, so it's not like it's, it's questionable the checks here or not. Uh, so I, we really appreciate, that's a huge donation. Um, the entire project, I, I believe is two hundred and fifty thousand is what we want to get to. So we got a ways to go to get the weight room. It was something that was in the other bond issue that some people said, you know, we don't want to pay for that as a, as a community. Um, and so we said, okay, we'll try to raise money to see where we can get to. And this is a big step in that direction. So we had that donation. I think the other donation that, um, Aaron had talked about was about a five thousand dollar donation as well. So, you know, starting to get some money that's flowing towards that purpose. I do, I appreciate it. I know that Mr. Best, when I had talked to him, that it had came in, you know, what can we do to really recognize these folks? Um, and so I'm all ears of what that would look like. Of course, the donor sometimes wants to make sure they're in the loop because some people don't like to be out in front of the, you know, of everybody at a game and get applauded for it and some do. So it just depends on who that person is. Something like that, I think is probably in order for this size of donation.
Yeah. I mean, that's amazing. I mean, what a, what a way to support like full child, right? And like healthy living and really improving our facilities.
We, we had an anonymous donation a few years back of like sixty-six thousand for the swim scoreboard, scoreboard. Some board members were here when that happened. You know, but that person, like I wanted to say anonymous, I didn't want to be out front, but, you know, other people are different. So we want to make sure the recognition fits. We did try at one time to recognize the, um, the tribe and, and, you know, for. We did try at one time to recognize the tribe and, you know, for, you know, the casino money that comes our way and they respectfully declined having something out front. We'll see. But much appreciation from our end.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty phenomenal gift. It's a great way to put your money where your mouth is. And if they would like to be, if they would allow us to recognize them, I think it's definitely the right thing to do, especially when you start to get in this type of financial commitment. I think it's, it deserves some recognition. And I think definitely on behalf of the board, you know, thank you to Duckworth. I think that's just phenomenal. If I'm looking for concrete work in the future, you know where I'm going first.
Yeah.
Minimally, we do a, we do a thank you letter on behalf of the district for everybody who donates.
And maybe something a little more personalized, right? Like, maybe we can do a thank you card that we all sign and maybe they, we ensure that they're at the ceremony. I don't know what we do when we do things like this, but like dedication or whatever, whatever we do, like make sure they're there and we can recognize, if, hopefully, if they're not the only ones that have a huge donation, that would be great, but like, ensure that we recognize those people at that, at that time, you know?
You know, in our strategic plan, under objectives, you know, we have plant seeds for corporate partnerships and that's just one way of those corporate partnerships. I mean, everything from maybe mentorships or that kind of thing, all the way to corporate donations. I think that, you know, that just embodies what we're looking for. So thank you to them. Anything further? If not, we'll move on to the AP Lit Chicago trip.
All right, so the AP Lit class would like to go to Chicago to see a Shakespearean play. I don't think it said which one, maybe the, you guys know, but I don't. What is it? Oh, it's the River Nice team, all right. And so they would go to both Navy Pier and this theater. It is a one-day trip. It looks like they are going to take a charter bus this time. They've done the train in the past, but they've gotten burnt a few times when the train was delayed coming home and getting home after midnight or even later. So, you know, right now it's seven forty-five, seven forty-five in the AM and return at seven thirty in the PM. Looks like they have five chaperones. Number of students, sixteen, so plenty of students for chaperones. I guess one concern might be the price, a hundred dollars, but that includes, you know, the charter bus as well as the tickets to the theater. I would recommend that we approve the trip.
Great educational opportunity.
How cool.
They usually go every year, typically. Like I said, they've gotten burned on the train a little bit. I think we all have, going to Chicago, one time or another.
All right, let's move on to comments from the audience.
We do have one. Talon Rob would like to talk about funding for the robotics club.
Please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Talon Rob. I live at thirty-five Crosby Drive. I have a student, a tenth grader in high school, and a fourth grader in Waddles Park. So my son is in the robotics club and this is the first year we've done it. So it's kind of just coming to my attention that the Harper Creek Robotics Club does not get any funding from Harper Creek. All the parents and, you know, the instructors and stuff on the team are the ones who are, you know, fundraising and donating money and stuff like that. The average cost for schools to build one of these robots and compete is around twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we've, I mean, we've raised a couple thousand this year. I know I've got a couple of donations from my work for the club. I know the other instructors are working on fundraisers and stuff like that. It is definitely hard for us to compete when we don't have the funding. Other schools do have the funding, so a lot of times we kind of get priced out, you know, when it comes to competition. I know Sunday, the students were in, they were pulling apart the old robot so they could try to put together a new one out of it, reusing all the old stuff, which isn't necessarily bad. It teaches, you know, students about, you know, reusing stuff. There's also a lot of other really good things that the robotics club teaches. Engineering, robotics, other STEM skills and stuff like that. I think if we could get the robotics club and the actual school, you know, working together a lot closer, then it'd be really good academically for students and also for the school. You know, like I said, the students are out there representing Harper Creek in these competitions. So it'd be nice if we had a little more of a fighting chance, you know, when it comes to things like that. I think that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you. The board doesn't respond to comments, but we definitely hear what you had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ridgeway, might you look into find out what other districts are doing as far as funding? Maybe on average, is that something we could take a look into?
Sure.
Thank you. No other comments? All right, we'll move on to action item A, summer tax levy resolution. Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the summer tax resolution as follows. Whereas the board desires to request that each city and/or township in which the district is located agree to collect summer tax levy of a hundred percent of annual school property taxes, including debt service upon property located within the district for 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the superintendent or designee is authorized and directed to forward to the governing body of each city and/or township in which the district is located, a copy of this board's resolution requesting that each such city and/or township agree to collect the summer tax levy of one hundred percent of annual school property taxes, including debt services upon property located within the district for 2025. Two, the superintendent or designee is authorized and directed to negotiate on behalf of the district with the governing board of each city and/or township in which the district is located for the reasonable expenses for collection of the district's summer tax levy that the city and/or township may bill under the revised school code. Any such proposed agreement shall be brought before this board for its approval or disapproval. And three, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as to conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
You know what, I'm really happy that we have you as.
I missed the second sentence.
There's just no doubt about it. Been moved by Mrs. Wallace. Going to go with Mrs. Waterston?
Yep.
Okay, second. Do we have discussion? Here in the scene, um, please call the roll.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr.?
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
All right, action item B, donation.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the donation to the Harper Creek Champions Project of fifty thousand dollars from Duckworth Construction and Concrete, Josh and Rebecca Duckworth, as a matching donation.
To move.
Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Halverson. Do we have discussion?
With many, many, many great things.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you for that. And last action item C, AP Lit Chicago trip.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the AP Lit class trip to Chicago on February tenth, twenty twenty-five to see a Shakespearean play.
To move.
Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Halverson. Do we have discussion? Here in the scene, um, please call the roll.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterston?
Yes.
Switched it up.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
She's here.
Uh, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
And I don't know if I voted, so I vote yes.
It's always a plus. All right, motion carries, seven zero. And as usual, I will reach out to each of you via text and email. Do we have anything for items for the next meeting as of now? Anybody's looking for?
High school schedule.
High school schedule. I think we nailed that one in, so. All right, a little bit longer meeting, we thought. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM. Good night.